Well, hello and welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrumbina people as the traditional original custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, the land, and the waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you, councillors. Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council Meeting of Monday the 5th of May 2025. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Item number two, apologies. councillor Ritchie has a leave of absence, and councillor Goine is also an apology this evening. Item number three, declarations of interests of councillors or close associates. Are there any declarations? There being none, we now move into our omnibus items. Item 4.1, confirmation of the minutes, that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 7th of April 2025 have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? There being none, we're now moving to item 4.2, mass communication. And colleagues, firstly, I received in very recent days a letter from Mr Ashton Ford, a student of McKellar College. And Mr Ford writes, Dear councillor Blomley, thank you for your letter, and thank you also so much for your generous support towards my recent trip to Perth to compete in the National Athletics Championships. I'm very grateful for the contribution to help make the trip possible. Additionally, I am pleased to say that I had a great time and raced as hard as I could in both events, and am glad to have gained race and national experience now while representing Tasmania. I'm also happy to say that I got a new personal best in the 1500 metres. Thank you once again, Ashton Ford. And that support was made possible through our quick grant response system. So it's wonderful news. So I'll table that letter. Thank you, CEO. And I thank Mr Ford for his for his letter. As has already been circulated, I now table a copy of my diary dates from the 9th of April through to Friday the 2nd of May. And as always, I thank councillor Heather Chong and councillor Emma Goine for representing me at several events as well. We now move on to 4.3, council workshops as listed in the agenda. 4.4, tabling of petitions. CEO, are there any petitions tonight?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No, there are no petitions.
Thank you. 4.5, reports from outside bodies. The first one being Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority. Councillor Walker.
His meeting later this month, and no doubt there'll be reports to follow.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Tasway South, councillor Warren? Thank you very much. And there's nothing either from Tas Water Corporation or the Greater Hobart Committee. Reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. You'll note that the audit panel chairperson's report has been included and has tabled in the agenda. I'll call for a mover of this report, please. Thank you, councillor Chong. And a seconder, councillor Warren, thank you. Would you, would you like to speak on this, councillor Chong? Councillor Warren? No? Anyone else wishing to make a comment or ask a question on this report? There being none. I'll put the, I'll put that motion that'd be accepted. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Are there any other reports for tabling, colleagues? Councillor Chong, please.
One for closed meeting.
Right, thank you. Any other reports? Moving on now then to 4.6, the weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports of the 7th, 14th, and 28th of April 2025 have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor Mulder, please.
Now, I refer to the weekly briefing report of the 28th of April 2025, and noting that tonight we have no planning matters before this council at all. Of the 40 development applications and subjectives and applications received, 28 have already been approved because there were no representations, and two have been approved with one representation. Might I suggest, and I could be corrected, that the decline in council applications is because developers are now starting to actually read their planning schemes before they put applications in, and as a consequence, most of them are conforming.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The weekly briefing report of the 7th of April 2025. Firstly, Simmons Park Liberty Swing Upgrade. I note that the current swing is used by date has basically passed, and therefore there needs to be an upgrade. Can I just seek some clarification in relation to this, and that is, will it be very similar to, although it does mention the Liberty Swing is required by Australian standards to be fenced and gated to control access, and I'm quoting here under overview in the second paragraph, users are also required to have a master locksmith access key to unlock the safety harness and operate the swing. And it goes on to say the key barrel and lock mechanism are maintained by council. So perhaps I could have some clarification in relation to as to whether this particular device is going to be implemented, or is this going to be another, well, new equipment proposed, which doesn't necessarily refer to all these Australian standards? Please.
Mr Graham, are you able to provide answer, please?
I can seek clarification from my staff, but I feel it's highly likely that it will still have sort of a similar system to the current standards.
Thank you. And just on the Liberty Swing as well at Simmons Park, I was on the board of Variety Tasmania at the time, and we, Variety Tasmania, installed that swing with assistance from council. Councillor Kennedy was also there too as ambassador for Variety Tasmania. So the involvement from Variety Tasmania and the investment in these types of accessible play equipments, and the goal at that time was in every local government area across the state. And I'm pleased to say that Variety Tasmania achieved that aim. So just to be give a shout out to all those hardworking volunteers for Variety Tasmania. Do you have any other issues, councillor James?
I have one other, on the same weekly briefing report of the 7th of April. Budget variations on page 21. I'm curious in relation to two of these items. Firstly, the Begonia Street Milano Road Intersection work, 99,237, and that was referred to Kerben Gutter's renewal ongoing, of which 15,000 has of that 99 been allocated, and this is under the Chief Executive Office's authorisation. So can I just have an explanation as to, I know it's under the 250,000, which is his delegate authority, but I thought that where there was some changes to some of these projects, and Begonia Milano Road Intersection was one of these that I've had a, I've been following very closely. Is this one of these that would in fact fall within the quarterly report, or is it on the basis that this is the report, and therefore we don't necessarily have an option to review it or ask a question in relation to it under the quarterly report? So if I could have an answer to that, please.
Before I call on the CEO, well, this is the quickest way to provide the advice, and clearly you're able to ask a question because you've just asked a question. It may also be included in the quarterly report as well, but I'll now ask the CEO to provide his response as well. Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. The report that's been provided regarding variations is provided in accordance with the Local Government Act to meet the requirements, again, under my delegation, where we've effectively moved money that's unspent from one project to another. And the quarterly report effectively will summarise that, but at a higher level. So you won't necessarily see all the line-by-line detail that you have in this report, but it will be summarised at a project level in terms of the completion of those projects. Does that answer your question, councillor James?
Yes, it does. In fact, if that's the situation, this particular project is listed here in the quarterly, sorry, in the weekly briefing report. So that is the end of it. We don't, won't see any other reference to it as part of the quarterly report. Thanks.
Just to clarify, there may be reference in the quarterly report to the project and its completion, but this report has more detail regarding the finances as they currently stand.
Okay. And the second item is that on page 21, the Bell Reef Boardwalk Bridge refurbishment, 165,000 through works undertaken in the previous year on the Bell Reef Movable Bridge, and therefore the project includes replacement of the hydraulic lines, et cetera. So 165,000 has been under the CEO's authorisation to go to LED street lights rollout. And again, I would imagine that for this number, 165,000, that there wouldn't necessarily be any reference in the quarterly report to that, notwithstanding the fact that anything to do with LED, I'm really excited about, because I think we need to get LED street lights across the city, up and, or within suburbia anyway, up and running. So again, to answer, I think, well, to my question, this is under your authorisation, so there would not necessarily be any reference in the quarterly reports. Is that the same answer that I could expect from my previous question? Please. Thanks.
Anything else, councillor James? Any other colleagues wishing to raise any issues with regards to the weekly briefing reports? All right. I note that we're now at the end of our omnibus items. Can I please have a mover? Thank you, councillor Chong, and a seconder. Thank you, councillor Kennedy. All those in favour? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, colleagues. Moving now on to item number five, public question time. 5.1, there's a question or notice from Mr Bradley Walker. Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. The question from Mr Walker is in relation to public open space in the Oceana Drive Development. The question reads as follows. Follow-up to question asked on 7th of April council meeting, public open space Oceana Drive Development. Can council explain what works a developer of SD 2011/30 still has to do and/or comply with in regard to their bushfire hazard management plan and conditions two to five of the planning permit? The answer to that question is that the residential lots which are affected by the bushfire hazard management plan and the reference conditions of permit SD 2011/30 have not yet been created. While a bushfire hazard management plan has been submitted and endorsed, ensuring compliance with any requirements of the approved plan and other relevant conditions of the permit will not occur until a final survey plan for these lots has been lodged with council for sealing. To date, that has not occurred.
Thank you, CEO. Are there any questions without notice from the gallery this evening? Mr Carr, do you have a question? All right, thank you. Moving now to item number six, deputations by members of the public. CEO, any deputations? I don't think so.
Not aware of any deputations.
Right. Unless you've got something, Mr Carr, you'd like to... Moving on now to item number seven, planning items. There are none there either. Item number eight, going into 8.4 Governance, 8.4.1, Environment and Biodiversity Grants Programme. There's a recommendation that we approve the distribution of grants totaling $23,340 to applicants in the February 2025 funding round of this programme. I'll call for a mover, please. Thank you, councillor Darko. Councillor Chong, you seconded that? Thank you. Councillor Darko, please.
Brief, it's a wonderful thing that we're doing in providing these grants to these community organisations that are providing valuable support to the environment and biodiversity within the municipality.
Thank you, councillor Darko. Councillor Chong? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution here? Councillor James, thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. The, on page 19, it refers to amongst other things, the, the Mount Rum, on 2.5, Mount Rumney Land Care Group Inc. Incorporated. And there was a request from that organisation for some natural values assessment and a community event in relation to the observatory on the hill. In the officer's report, it says, and I quote, "Mount Rumney Land Care Group is not incorporated and failed to provide OSBS information." It's my understanding that the Mount Rumney Land Care Group is incorporated under the Associations, Incorporations Act. So I stand corrected if it's not, if that's a typo with the word Inc. in there. So if I first could have some clarification in relation to that, please, as to whether it's an incorporated association under the incorporation, Tasmania Association, Incorporations Act, please.
CEO or Miss Merrill, or sorry, Mrs Coburn? Mr Graham? Everyone wins a prize tonight?
That's fine, but I don't have any further information than what's before us in the report to advise differently to what councillor James has asked.
Thank you, Mr Graham.
And, and one of the reasons why this has not been recommended on, is that although it does say, it provides a comprehensive natural values assessment, Remenan Bush Block, following the completion of the NVA, a community education and awareness field. So I would have thought that really, this is a very worthy project, and, and it's from those organisations, or that organisation which has a concern about its environment and so on. So at the moment, if, if we're going to proceed along those lines and not recommend it, then I think that we're redoing ourselves an injustice, because this is in fact a recognised body. It has to lodge paperwork with the Department of Justice as part of its, well, it doesn't necessarily if it's got a turnover under a certain limit. That's the changes that have occurred in recent years. But nevertheless, if it's incorporated, it is incorporated, and they have the right to either lodge the paperwork with the Department of Justice. Alternatively, they need to have it recognised through their annual meeting in the AGM. So I just would like to see if we can seek further clarification on this, because it seems as though that the word incorporated speaks for itself, and therefore if we are saying it should be rejected because it's not incorporated, then I think we're doing ourselves a disservice.
Thank you, councillor James. I'll ask the CEO, just to clarify a couple, a couple of points, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I've just received some advice from Ms Shay that indicates that the group is incorporated. That's obviously, for whatever reason, we informed of you that they weren't, but Ms Shay has been able to, as you were speaking, confirm that through the registry. But I will draw your attention to paragraph 2.5 in the report, and there are actually two reasons why this wasn't recommended for support. And the second reason related to a lack of consultation with the environment and biodiversity team, which was a requirement for the project. So councillor James, my recommendation would be, these, these projects will come up for reconsideration again in a further grant round. There needs to be some consultation with the council team. My, I would encourage the land care group to do that, and then everything may well be in order from that point.
Thank you, councillor James. Any other colleagues wishing to speak to this item before the chair? Councillor Walker, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I guess my heuristic with these sort of grants is that they get used for more sort of practical purposes. We have a wonderful range of coast care and, and land care groups within, within the municipality. And so, yeah, in my head, that's, that's where I'm seeing us using this, giving tangible effects for, for our residents to see for the rates that are taken from them. And so just on that basis, and at risk of creating a black swan event by trying to get some education around the specific black duck, that, that duck's hardly endemic to this municipality, is it?
Uh, CEO, I'm not the expert on ducks, I'm sorry.
Well, we're handing out 10,000, so someone should be a duck scientist.
Thank you, but it's not me. Unless Mr, unless Mr Graham has any duck expertise. Understanding of that, we'll have to take it on note.
Through you, Mr Mayor. No, I have no further information other than what's, what's before us.
Cetile and prolific species around the area, the area being the nation and maybe even other countries, including PNG, Indonesia, New Zealand, et cetera. So I'm sure it's a really motivated group. I'm just trying to ascertain something that, you know, might be of a great resource for education across maybe even the southern hemisphere, if the booklets develop. But again, it would have been nice to get some, you know, some more rigor around what, what the outcome is going to be specifically for the, for the ratepayers that are paying for this. And is it something they're doing because there's, there's something unique about the way the black duck is within the Clarence municipality? Or is it a case that this is our contribution to some wider picture? And if it is, I think we should be upfront about that, because there's scant, scant information to me to work from what's in the report.
I'll just make the observation too, that, that's why we have the Friday agenda briefings as well, to ask those questions. And if the responsible or subject matter expert from the staff isn't in the room, we think it's some time to get the information to elected members. But I thank you for your comments, councillor Walker. Anyone else wishing to make a comment or a contribution to this item before the chair? Councillor Darko, you're right of reply. Thank you. I put the motion, which is a recommendation. All those in favour? Those against? So two abstentions there. Councillor Walker and councillor James have abstained. All right. So carried, thank you. Moving now on to item 8.4.2. Sorry, no, that's not right. My paper's been messed up. It is? 7th of April? Oh, so the date's incorrect on my papers. I'm hopefully on everyone else's as well. So I've got the right piece of paper in front of me. Thank you. We have the community grants and cultural and creative grants. Call for a mover, please. Thank you, councillor Kennedy. A seconder? Councillor Darko, thank you. Councillor Kennedy, please.
Nothing further, Mr Mayor, other than to say I'm so thrilled that we're able to do this for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Darko?
Nothing to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution here? Councillor James, thank you.
Just getting a bit of a habit now that I'm back full flight. On the Indian Festivals Association of Tasmania, and it looks great, you know, it's a vibrant floral festival and celebrations. And so my question is, is this based in Clarence, or is it somewhere where we would, in conjunction with either Sorrel or Hobart City Councils, support this to the tune of 5,000? So my question is, is this a locally based organisation, or is it sort of a one-off to make it a key event, whether it's in Hobart, Clarence, or Sorrel? Please.
Ms Coburn, are you in a position to provide an answer, please?
For the benefit of the Clarence community. I don't have details to hand of the, where the group themselves are based, but I can provide that advice subsequent to the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Ms Coburn. Any other questions, councillor?
Island Press, and it's been supported as far as their application of 5,000 is concerned. Again, my question is in relation to where this is being held, and I would have thought Hunter Island is obviously on the Hobart City Council area. But nevertheless, if I could have an answer to that, as to where this particular event, the 21st birthday year, and where that event will be held, please.
Thank you, Ms Coburn.
Again, through you, Mr Mayor. Hunter Island Press are based at the Worksworth site in Clarence and have been for the last 25 years. And so they run a series, they run workshops and programmes based from that site.
Thank you. And just on the, our, the diversity of our different communities throughout southern Tasmania, you'll note from my diary that I've attended in the last three weeks two events. And one of the blockers for having events here in Clarence, of course, is our lack of civic centre. So Hobart- So Hobart and Glenorkie regularly uh host those types of events. We've we did one, we've done um an Indian event at the Baptist Citywide Church, um, which we sponsored the year before, uh, last year and the year before that. But um I think it's wonderful that we're really stepping up and uh supporting uh our diverse uh um communities across southern Tasmania. All right, councillor Kennedy, oh, sorry, anyone else wish to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, please.
Yeah, whilst I've raised concerns that sometimes the the scale and the the um frequency of the grants process uh, you know, weighing everything up, I will tell the graph straight away that I will be supporting this process. Um, and I I note the mix of mix and variety that that are amongst the uh successful applicants. Um, but I will use this thing this time to telegraph some disappointment that uh the Girl Guides Programme, the Pathway to Empowerment, helping women to access walking um tracks uh didn't even get past go. Um, it 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 seems like a again, a a worthy request and a worthy outcome for what were the intentions of that programme. And, you know, when something like this is coming um through in a grand um request, uh, I I would have liked to think that it wouldn't just be an automatic no, that there would be um some handholding around how to how to how to get it there. I noticed the outstanding acquittal, um, and that's probably a further conversation for a further time. But um, yeah, I I I'm disappointed that we can't get something like that over the line. I think it um it it's a very worthy uh endeavour and concept that was put forward. And uh I think we're probably letting our community down that we don't find a way to make something like that happen.
There, councillor Walker. Ms Coburn, would you like to respond or do that?
Uh, yes, simply that um we do have um clear clear criteria for um successful grants and the um uh outstanding acquittal um automatically um removes them from consideration. But we'd certainly consider them, um, encourage them to reapply next time once they've completed that acquittal.
Thank you, Ms Coburn. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Bina, councillor Kennedy, write a reply.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I'd just like to thank Ms Coburn for being able to answer those questions so um succinctly and to also mention that Hunter Island Press have a set at the table with Belarive Community Arts Centre as well. And um thank you for colleagues important, I seek your support.
I'll put the motion, that is a recommendation, all those in favour? Yeah, thank you, that's your name, thanks colleagues, thank you very much. Moving now to item nine, nine point one, notice of motion seen in the name of councillor Mulder, is there a second up? Thank you councillor Hume, councillor Mulder, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, with some disappointment, I must say, that um I read a one-page letter saying no to the Flagstaff Gully Link Road. And the fact that it is, um, you know, and this is one with much fanfare, with the Greater Hobart City Deal and the Hobart, Greater Hobart Committee and all those sorts of things. We have submitted this as one of the projects because of its capacity to avoid and reduce congestion on the eastern end of the Tasman Bridge. Yet we get a one-page letter saying no. Low projected usage. Tell that to the people in Begonia and Malano Street who can't get out of their driveway because there isn't another access from Mornington to Gilston Bay. So tell that to the people in Sorrel, who despite the fact we're going to build four lanes, coming from Sorrel, which should hopefully um in-improve the traffic flow, at least to Mornington, that they can't use that because there's no connection between Mornington and the Bowen Bridge, other than going up to the congested eastern end of the Tasman Tasman Bridge or lining up on the ubiquitous um Clearies Gates interchange. At any time of the day or night, you'll get there and there'll be vehicles banked up all the way over there trying to get on to Brooker Avenue. And we in this council many years ago, on one of my motions, conducted a ratio report. We conducted about six, there were basically three, but sub-variations of routes that could be taken. And the cost benefit return on that, on building one of those routes was two dollars fifty to three dollars fifty for the Flagstaff Gully Link Road. So for every dollar we stuck in, there was up to three dollars fifty community benefits coming back. Compare that to the Gigantuan Bridgewater Bridge, which has to this day a cost return benefit of nothing more than fifty eight cents in the dollar. In other words, it's a loss-making enterprise compared to this small project, which would return so much more. And in the last three years, in state and federal budgets, there has been no funding for council-type roads in this city. We start to wonder what the Greater Hobart City Council is all about. Now, the, now, in 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 association with this, there's also something about the Brighton to Airport Transport Corridor, which once again, state growth is dragging its heels on. And there are rumours coming out, and this is a transport corridor, this isn't about commuters, this is about heavy vehicle traffic. And we're starting to get the impression that what state growth is recommending, that they don't want to do anything on the eastern side. All the traffic that is going from Brighton to the airport, it is their intention to drive it down Brooker Avenue and over the Tasman Bridge to the airport, when there are things like Backtree, Gras, Back, um, Tea Tree Road and other roads like that that ought to be upgraded to do those transport things. Where is this government head around not funneling everything over the Tasman Bridge? You know, we can't keep driving traffic, commuter or transport through these, through the Brooker Avenue, through the congested approaches and exits, might I say, of the Tasman Bridge. Sooner or later, we're going to have to come up with this idea of ring roads. A ring road that means traffic travelling between Kingston and Belarive and uh and Clarence doesn't have to go through the centre of the city. When that, when no one wants to go to the centre of the city. When are we going to start to realise that we need these ring, western and eastern ring roads for commuter and for transport traffic? So the purpose of this motion is, I know we've written to them asking for more detail as a result of a question I asked in this place. But when, you know, and and I'm simply bringing this motion forward to say we need to put more information on the table.
Thank you councillor Mulder, councillor Hume.
Mr Mayor, um, and I commend councillor Mulder for his um ongoing advocacy on this issue because um Hobart, Greater Hobart does have a traffic congestion problem. It's something that's felt acutely on the eastern shore, um, particularly on the approaches to the Tasman Bridge in the morning. Um, and uh the Flagstaff Gully Link Road, to me, seems like a no-brainer. Um, but I s-I see parallels between this situation where we have something that potentially affects a a lot of people, um, frustrated frustrated motorists in this case. Um, you know, have to deal with this congestion. Um, and therefore something that has massive public interest, but where the state government has um commissioned a report and while it's in the public re-in the public interest, has refused to release it. Um, and I see parallels between that situation and um the situation with the reports on the Tasmania Government's flawed decision on the um High Performance Centre location. So, you know, absolutely, we should be demanding access to this report, not just council access, but but I think public access. Because, you know, if it if it if it really does say uh something other than the reports that that council has commissioned, then we need to be able to see those conclusions, how those conclusions were drawn, and have the ability to challenge them if necessary. Thank you.
Good, councillor Hume, um, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James, please. Pleasure.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, and this is a a great motion and it's been in this place all the, it has been discussed in this place um back in the eighties when I was on, obviously in the council and we had a a motion on the books that this council supports the Flagstaff Gully Link Road. And there was a number of options that were suggested, one of which was to link with Gilston Creek Road and then down into uh that area of the um uh East Ewan Highway. Also, the ratio report did go into great detail at the time and a number of suggestions were made in relation to extension of the Flagstaff Gully Road link as and a link to Sugarloaf. That was one of the options. The second one was in relation to Grass Tree Hill. And also, if I recall, there was another suggestion in relation to Rocky Tom. Now, there was a lot of costings done at that time and uh and I think at the ratio report came out and said that there was uh unless there is the demand and traffic will increase and so on and so forth, then they didn't actually provide a a definitive response in relation to this. But what's happening now is of very, of of great interest to us. And that's why I was heartened by the election of Julie Collins over the weekend because she's come out and made a commitment that they are going to spend eighty million with the state and I think twenty million, it might be a hundred million all up. But the federal, I think I'm correct in saying that, that the eighty million is coming from the federal government and that's being committed to the Mornington Roundabout. And that just so happened to be one of my election pre uh uh pre uh promises back in twenty twenty-two, when I had it on my brochure that we need to do something as quickly as possible about the Mornington Roundabout. And that's why I'm pleased that we can keep Julie Collins to an account and make sure that that does come along with the on-off ramps. And I might say, being a a local resident of Gordon's Hill Road, that I've seen a lot of activity down there at the moment with the surveyors and so on. And I think they're getting on to the uh off-ramp or the on-ramp, which is going to be part partly on Gordon's Hill Road and then swing on to the Tasman Highway. So that's that's another great factor. And that's also a plus in order to look at the extension of the Flagstaff Gully Link Link Road beyond. The other factor that's of importance and has been mentioned in this place, that they're going to decommission the Flagstaff Gully Reservoir in some years' time. It's no longer required and therefore if that's being decommissioned, then in fact that may give a better avenue for rather going up that steep section of the of the embankment as you approach the sort of Flagstaff Gully Quarry. So there's a lot of pluses in here and this where this motion is, in part E in particular, is really important. Request the Department of State Growth to release the full report, including traffic modelling and data, if any, used to reach their conclusions. So I hope that this motion, in fact, does carry some weight. And I seek council colleagues to support this because it does address not only the Flagstaff Gully Link Road, but also the Sorrel traffic and also the um uh Gordon's Hill Road and Begonia Roads that will be alleviated by an alternative route, if it happens to Gilston Bay or beyond.
Any other colleagues wishing to contribute? Thank you councillor Chong.
Through you, Mr Mayor, very quick question, I guess. Um, when was the ratio report done? I get the impression it was quite some time ago and I can't remember.
Uh, Mr Graham?
Uh, with me, it was released through a weekly briefing report, which I could find, but it might be oh eight or no, oh nine or oh ten. Uh, it's about that sort of timeframe.
I question whether the the traffic movements and the traffic patterns are today the same as they were fourteen, fifteen years ago, um, because certainly they have changed, so.
Thank you councillor Chong, any other colleagues wishing, thank you councillor Walker.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, and through you, what will probably be councillor Mulder's quota of compliments from me for this term of council. Um, and I, just just let, just let them aerate, they're, they're not, they're not, this is it, this is it. The bottom line is, uh, I thank uh the councillor for the the work he got underway, um, sort of nudging around the ratio report, very useful, um, very, very useful documentation. And I would note that uh in twenty eleven, um, the work that was done to uh get get things moving around it, I think it was the notice of motion, working towards a road reservation um for the Flagstaff Gully Link Road. It wasn't saying we're building it, it was simply saying, here's some lines on the map where it can go. Um, let's let's get this out there, let's make it a known thing so people are thinking about it, especially around the council planning table as things move forward. This is something that might happen next year or twenty years, whenever it is, just some prudent planning because it doesn't cost a lot of money to put lines on a map. And I would note that uh I would note that um a lot of things happened in that year and then shortly after uh when council had put out for exhibit the uh road reservation, uh, the councillor Mulder um resigned from council. Um, and I would come on um fresh-faced in twenty twelve, uh, very enthusiastic to see this thing uh move forward. I was a little bit surprised to find that uh it was an eleven to one vote to take it out. And by the time the process had finished, I was the only councillor around the table supporting it. That was, that was a disappointment. And and this is probably going to be one of the things that state growth may come back and say, well, you're saying this, but you, have you ever really said, you know, you've moved on from your previous position? Something to mull over, so uh, you know, I'd say to councillors around the table that are a little bit sceptical, nonplussed, possibly even ambivalent around this motion, if you are, it's not a huge ask. It's four notes and a request, the budgeting line item is uh five minutes of someone's time to be sending off the email. Um, I think it's, I think it's a motion worth supporting and I don't see many downsides from it. Um, ultimately, though, this is a D S G matter to go from start to finish. Um, and we can but make polite requests, we can help facilitate things, but ultimately, this would be the road that they would be building and not us. Um, and it is a more prudent thing we're taking to them. Um, and, you know, it was raised around D S G and the parklands and council can reflect on that. You you may well want to make allegations of it being flawed. How much information did you provide to them in the expressions of interest uh process for it? We know that not all the reports um that were later provided were there, so um, it's a surprise to me that people didn't understand it's just, um, you know, dollar right for near. But apparently nobody did until we'd spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. Anyway, um, this is a a project that I'd like to see happen and I think we should all back it. There were alternatives for the uh High Performance Centre that we could have worked on, we chose not to. I'm not sure there are alternatives for a link road, um, so let's all coalesce around four notes and a request.
Thank you councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I'd just like to remind colleagues that you don't solve traffic congestion by building additional roads. Um, as long as we have the majority of traffic with cars of single occupancy heading into the city, parking there for the day and then heading back again, um, because we don't have a viable public transport system, we're going to have uh traffic congestion and just building more roads will increase um the motivation for people to take their cars with single occupancy. Um, as to ring roads, I know that in the UK, they thought they would build a ring road around London and that is now the world's largest car park. Uh, again, build roads, more people are encouraged to drive their cars. So until we address the traffic um of Hobart and the Greater Hobart, build a decent public transport system that runs where people want it, when they want it, at a price that they can afford um, and provide disincentives for people to drive into town and park all day, building another road is not going to make a difference. Um, so um as to this particular motion, four notes and a request, as councillor Walker comments. So as to this particular motion, four notes and a request, as councillor Walker comments, sure, we can note those things. There's no argument there. As for the request, I understand, as I'm sure my colleagues do from the Friday briefing, that such a request has already been made by council officers. So I see that as unnecessary. So while I'm not against asking for more information, I don't see the point in supporting an unnecessary motion.
Any other colleagues wishing to make, councillor Darko, thank you.
So you said pretty much what I was about to say. I definitely think that we should be addressing this using public transport, which should be free and much more frequent, as opposed to getting more people in their stinking cars. That said, I've reached the opposite conclusion to you on this motion and I will be supporting it because at the end of the day, more information is better than less.
So Darko, thank you. councillor Hunter or councillor Kennedy, do either one of you wish to? All right, well, before I call on the mover, our colleagues are now into the debate as a councillor, not as your mayor. Disappointingly, time and time again, this state government fails to step up and deliver critically important infrastructure for the eastern shore. The Department of State Growth's failure to release the full feasibility report for the Flagstaff Gully Link Road and its dismissal of the project for the next 20 years is yet another example of this government's inaction on vital infrastructure needs in Clarence. Colleagues, council and our community deserve transparency and forward planning, not delays and vague dismissals. As we all know, the Flagstaff Gully Link Road remains a high return, low regret investment. The ratio report clearly shows the Flagstaff Gully Link Road delivers strong value, up to $3.50 return for every $1 invested, far exceeding projects like the New Bridgewater Bridge. So dismissing this option without sharing the data not only demonstrates, in my view, an arrogance and a distinct lack of respect for the Clarence community, but also undermines evidence-based decision-making that once again puts eastern shore residents last. As we all know, traffic congestion at the Tasman Bridge is worsening and alternatives are urgently needed. We are a growing city. Sorrel is a growing municipality and congestion on the eastern approaches to the Tasman Bridge continued to increase, pushing more traffic through unsafe alternatives like Grasstree Hill and Brinktop Roads. Without a strategic approach that delivers new infrastructure to ease the pressure, including a viable connection between the Tasman Highway and Bowen Bridge, safety and economic productivity is being undermined and, in my view, being put at grave risk. And that should just not be the case. As I have often said, planning for the future must include a replacement for the aging and structurally compromised Tasman Bridge. The Tasman Bridge is a critical pinch point for Greater Hobart and its replacement or duplication must be factored into the long-term planning and that must start now. Appropriately, council's seeking to clarify or seeking clarity on DSG's contingency planning in the event of failure or disruption, where their current traffic loads and safety performances are considered acceptable. I wholeheartedly support this motion and urge all colleagues to do likewise. councillor Mulder, write a reply, please.
I'll try to add to the one you just gave. The fact is, is that we haven't got the full report yet because State Growth is waiting Ministerial sign off. But just how long does that sort of sign off take? And the purpose of this motion was to add some more things to say, whatever the report may say, can you please address these issues? And that's the reason for the noting bits and pieces in it and probably a second letter to them to saying, make sure your report addresses these rider issues. That's the purpose of this motion. The original assessment of the options, and I'm going to councillor James's point here, was actually done by a firm called Global Value Management. At the time, an interesting mix of names was being run by a company, by two principals called John Lennon and Paul Howard, both of whom were in senior political positions at the time, with first names changed over. And if we talk about the road reservations, the point is, is that although that decision was made, and it was made in my absence, and there was a lot of hoo-hawing at the time, and I commend councillor Walker for actually filling in the shoes when I was missing in action. The fact is, is that if we understand this is so important and we understand this is so strategic, and maybe it will be 20 years, but even the DSG report, the State Growth report, says it won't be considered for another 20 years. Now, blind Freddy can see that eventually this link has to happen. So maybe the next motion before this council, and I encourage someone else to move it, is that we do create the road reservations and park them so that the avenue is there. Now, I've got some concerns about here. I think there's a little bit of politics being played here. There's another link road that should be the responsibility of the state government. And I refer to Pass Road, but this council stood up and said, no, we'll fund it, 100%. And to me, that is a concern, that the state government might be saying, oh, well, Clarence thinks these roads are important. Why should we dip into our budget to build them when Clarence has shown the capacity to go ahead and build them anyway? That was my reference to none of these things are in the budget, despite being in the Greater Hobart City Plan. In terms of public transport being the solution, I deliberately mentioned the Brighton Way.
Thank councillor Mulder. Put the motion. All those in favour? Against? So carried. Thank you. Moving now on to item 10, councillor's question time. There are none on notice. 10.3, answers to questions without notice to previous council meetings listed in the agenda. 10.4, questions without notice. Are there any questions on the form, same this evening with councillor Mulder?
Interestingly, on the same sort of an issue. I refer to the River Dewan Ferry Services strategic overview, which I have a copy here and am happy to table, but I don't think that would be necessary since it's available on the web. Under a heading called easing congestion, there is a quote which said, direct ferry services preferred by commuters from these locations would help contribute to a reduction in peak traffic congestion on the Tasman Bridge, which carries the highest traffic volumes in Greater Hobart. My question is, is there any data to support this assertion? That the Dewan Ferry Services has contributed to a reduction in peak hour congestion on the Tasman Bridge?
Mr Graham.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I'll have to take that one on notice and have a look through the copy of the report and see what data it's actually referring to.
Thank you. Second question councillor Mulder.
In assistance with that, you can read the report, there is no data. Just bold assertions, political assertions. I'm also, my second question relates to a similar matter. Residents were very concerned over the increasing traffic, should we seal Begonia Street, on Begonia-Maluna Street, if Begonia Street were sealed? Is there any data on traffic movements before and after the sealing? And if not, is there any intention to do so?
Thank you councillor Mulder. Mr Graham, please.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Was adopted, when council adopted to seal Begonia Street, that before and after data would be presented to council, I think from memory, it was 12 months after it was operational.
Thank you, Mr Graham. councillor Hunter? councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Going back to the $100 million funding that's gone to the, allocated to the Mornington Roundabout. I understand that that project is commencing this year and that there will be community consultation. Do we have any indication of when council will have an opportunity to have some input into the design of that project?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
You have a second question?
No.
Thank you. councillor James, please. No, no, sorry, no, you may not. councillor James.
Two questions. Firstly, in relation to the Rosney Hill Hotel development. I understand there is discussion over a number of terms and conditions in order to enable this project to proceed. And it seems as though that there has been a delay in this, in the discussions and coming to agreement with some of the terms and conditions. Is there an out of jail clause that would allow council, if by some means or other that those terms and conditions are not agreed to by council? Or there is some means by which there is some concern from council's perspective? Does that mean that council can, by the very nature, decide to pull the pin and proceed not to go any further with the project?
The sensitivity of that question, Mayor, I'll take that on notice and provide a considered response.
Thank you, sir. councillor James.
The second question is in relation to the hard waste motion that was passed in this place. And from memory, we were to receive a report from council officers investigation in relation to what's happened in relation to the other councils on the mainland or thereabouts. It's my understanding that we were going to have a report leading up to our discussions on the budget. And so we're right in the midst of that. So my question is, when will we receive that report? And is it still timely for us to be able to make a decision on what we may decide to do in relation to hard waste collection or a variation to what we have done in the past? Leading up to our next long session, which is in a week's time, as I understand it. So we're cutting it fairly fine. So my question is, will we have that information on hard waste prior to us making a decision one way or the other on whether we're going to adopt what other councils have decided to or suggested? And make sure it's included in the discussions as part of the budget process.
Mr Graham.
Through you, Mr Mayor. We did a workshop with council a number of weeks ago where we presented information on the hard waste that we had from the draft report at that time. And we presented some indicative costings of potentials. And council's direction at the time was to await the receipt of the final report. I don't have a date on that, but I will follow up with my staff this week and advise council before Monday next week at our discussion on the likely timing of the report.
Thank you, Mr Graham. My recollection was that it was imminent because it was the many councils involved, so it's a bit of corralling. But it is, and I've spoken to Mr Young as well, he assured me that it is imminent. councillor Walker.
And I note within the diary entries, I don't know, sometimes media is included and obviously on Friday, you're on 936 talking about the tyre collection service. My assumption is that those 60 places or whatever left would have been long gone by now.
You're right, because white people snapped up and they're all gone. And I was being stopped on Saturday morning by people saying they'd heard the interview like you and they'd made the booking, so good point.
Yes, I know. My question in relation to both that and the soft plastic, as I said, schemes that are popular and appreciated by the community, relates to the role of the Sustainability Committee, something that I thought was set up to sort of use as a brains trust to work through ideas and things. So it's a committee that I've, as councillor Ron stepped down, I stepped onto in October. And from both my recollection and the minutes, neither of these concepts were brought to us and brought to the eminent people that sit on it, some wise heads, much more than mine, around the table to get their views on the matter. And I'd just like to get some understanding as to why the committee isn't being used to sort of work through these ideas, if that's not the whole process and point of it being.
councillor Walker, I think it's a very good point. We will take that on notice. I think maybe you as chair might like to sit down, no, sorry, who's chair? Sorry, councillor Hunter, my apologies. Maybe we might get the two of you together with the CEO and the council ELT member. Is that you, Mr Graham, or is it Mr Young?
I'm certainly involved, Mr Mayor, and I can provide some answers.
I don't think we'll do it now. I think what we'll do is we'll get together for a meeting and let's just work out the rules of engagement so that you're satisfied as elected members, that you do have oversight and input, because I think it's a very good point that you make. Your second question councillor Walker.
For closed or forever keep my peace?
All right, thank you. councillor Darko, councillor Warren, and welcome back. councillor Chong, councillor Kennedy. All right, thank you. I note that, well, I'll now move, call for a motion to move into closed meeting, please. Thank you councillor Warren, seconded councillor Chong. All those in favour? Are they unanimous? Thank you. Thank you to that member of the public who attended in person tonight, Mr Cowell. Always a pleasure to have you with us, sir.
Enjoy.
And to those joining us from home, thank you for your company this evening. Please stay well and we'll see you again three weeks' time at 6pm. Thank you so much. Please end the live feed.